I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 15th, 2019, meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Good morning. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, January 18th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Okay. Thank you. Would everyone rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to talk about this morning's agenda. It's a special day. We'll be switching chairs here and we're going to have the swearing in of the three board members who ran for election last year. So first, we'll have the swearing in, then we'll elect the Chair and Vice Chair, then we'll have about a 15-minute reception in the lobby. Hopefully, there's food now. We've got a lot of football players here. I'm sure they need to be fed. And then, we'll come back with the regular agenda, starting with consent. So, we will start the swearing in with Supervisor Kennedy. And I understand Greg Thatch is here to swear him in. You can probably get extra government points at your high school for watching this, I'm sure.
You're hereby being sworn in for the office of Board of Supervisors, 2nd District, County of Sacramento, State of California. Please raise your right hand and repeat the following statement. I, Patrick Kennedy, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I, Patrick Kennedy, do swear that I will defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose or evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will, that I will, that I well.
Well done. This is subscribed and sworn to me, Gregory D. Thatch, this 15th day of January 2019.
Thank you, sir.
Patrick?
Yes, sir.
I think you have to sign. It's like getting married. Sign the form.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thatch.
Thank you.
I run a two-minute clock.
Thank you.
And I'm going to use your two minutes plus, so...
Do you yield your time to Mr. Natoli?
Mr. Bray? Ready to do it?
Okay. You are hereby being sworn in for the office of Board of Supervisors, 5th District, County of Sacramento, State of California. Please raise your right hand and repeat the following statement. I, Don Natoli.
I, Don Natoli.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. May I introduce to you all Supervisor Don Natoli of the 5th District as he begins his seventh term of office?
Well, thank you, Keith, and thank you all for your attention here this morning. It's indeed an honor to have my very good friend of many, many years, Keith Bray, do the honor and privilege of swearing me in this morning, but to stand before all of you and certainly before the people of Sacramento County, as Keith announced, as I begin my seventh term as a member of the Board of Supervisors. And I do want to express some thank yous this morning and some introductions briefly, and then just to offer a few brief comments as I do embark upon that next term. I'd like to recognize some folks in the audience that are very important in my life. You certainly had a chance to meet Keith. But over my, certainly, years of public service, now in my 41st year with the County of Sacramento, I've had certainly the support and the love of family and friends, and obviously the faith that's been placed in me by the voters and people of District 5. So, I want to recognize some folks, maybe hold your applause as we go down the line. There's a number of folks here. But certainly, first and foremost, recognize my wife of nearly 38 years, Brenda Natoli. Brenda. And my mother, obviously, who I wouldn't be here without. Her sacrifice very early in my life, but my mother Rita Natoli. I also would acknowledge my brother and sister. My sister and brother are not able to be here this morning, but my sister Andrea and my brother Nick. And then, I have some very dear friends and folks who, again, have been a support to me in my role as supervisor, but certainly in my daily life. And I'll just kind of go down in order here. I have Pat Brazil and her husband Sam Anderson. Pat served as my Chief of Staff and Assistant for many, many years, and again, both she and Sam have been very good friends. I have my current Chief of Staff and very good friend Cheryl Vanegas. Two Secretaries, current Secretaries, Tony Tino and Matisha Oliver, again, without of whom, again, anybody knows the life of a supervisor, certainly the work life, without the support and help of answering phones and getting correspondence out and doing all the things that go with that, that's impossible to do this job and to do it well. In the row up above, I have my former Chief of Staff, again, long, long-time friend. We actually started working together back in 1981, I believe, and she served as my Chief of Staff for a number of years. That's Jane Smith. And then, beside her is a person who served as a Secretary for both Toby, as did Jane worked for Toby Johnson as well, but for me for many, many years, and then it was my Special Assistant, that's Sylvia Persaud. And I don't see anybody else here in the audience this morning. So, how about a round of applause for all those folks? They were very important to me. And I would note that there are others who aren't here, but certainly throughout the course of my career in public service, again, one of the things that I will acknowledge all the time, because it's so true, and that is, is that no person does this job or any job alone, and that it's through the love and support and certainly the good work of employees with the County of Sacramento and the many folks who conduct their daily lives as calling Sacramento their home or a place of work, or certainly a place they come to visit and hopefully return again. It's so vital that those connections between people and the support and respect that we show for one another are exemplified not only in the work, but obviously in the results. And so, again, I thank all of those people I've already recognized. I also want to say that Keith, in doing the swearing in this morning, is one of several folks who've, again, given me the honor of doing that. Some of those folks are no longer with us, and I want to acknowledge them because they were very strong in my life. Certainly, my predecessor and very good friend Toby Johnson, who served as Supervisor of 5th District for 16 years. He and his wife Sue Johnson, who passed, just passed away this past year. Again, we're very dear friends, very important in my life, and again, I think contributed certainly to the success I've been able to achieve, but also I think the accomplishments that in working with many of you in this room here, we've been able to better our community. I also want to recognize my father, Don Natoli Senior, who passed away, but did the honors here at this dais, this podium, a couple of terms ago. So, all that being said, I wanted to say that today is a very special day. Again, it marks a reflection on 40 years thus far, and obviously, looking ahead to the future, the next four years, the opportunity to continue to serve the people of Sacramento County, to do my best, my very best, each and every day to represent the interest, a variety of interests, obviously, of the people in this community. But I would just say that certainly in looking forward that I think the future for our community is a bright one. It's certainly going to be filled with challenges, but that's part of what we do in life, is to meet those challenges, meet them head-on, to work together with the leadership, certainly the county workforce, working in concert with our nonprofit and our private sector community to, I think, each day, to do our best to try to serve the interests of people from all walks of life, of all ages, and I think that's what this county really strives to do and does very well in many, many respects, in serving some of those who are the least among us, whether they be children or the elderly, the disabled, folks who may be less fortunate, that come to us with a myriad of challenges, but hopefully, we can provide the underpinnings and the, I think, the services and programs that allow them to get back on their feet, to enjoy the respect and hopefully the quality of life that we want for ourselves and for all of us around us. And I would hope that over the next few years, we continue to work to, again, build a community that we can all be proud of, and that I can be a part of that in some small way. I think the role of a supervisor is one to represent people, obviously, to make decisions regarding the resources that are our tax dollars, and to, I think, fairly represent people from all walks of life. So, I really want to congratulate my two colleagues for their reelection, and certainly, I look forward to working with all of my colleagues in the Board of Supervisors, with county staff, certainly led by Navgill, our county executive, and a very strong team of folks at the leadership position, but the men and women of Sacramento County to make this the best place we can make it to be. And I would just pledge to you, as has been said by, it's something that comes to my mind as I was thinking about this morning, that President Abraham Lincoln said that "Do the very best you can, for as long as you can, to the very end." So, I intend to do that, to continue to work on your behalf, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you this morning. Thank you.
Okay. Our last but not least Supervisor Serna, ready to be sworn in. And swearing him in is a very close relative, Roxanna Serna. It's nice to see you.
You are hereby being sworn in for the office of the Board of Supervisors, 1st District, County of Sacramento, State of California. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi, state your name.
Hi, Philip R. Serna.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very smart.
Greg, your flowers are on the way.
So, this is the third time I've had the incredible good fortune to be sworn in as an elected member of this esteemed board. It's the first time that my partner in life, my dear wife Roxanna, has sworn me in, and I just wanted to start my thank yous by recognizing her. That and the fact that the last time I was sworn, and I'm sure Mr. Kennedy remembers this well, I almost left this podium without thanking her, so I'm not going to make that mistake twice. But in all seriousness, as Supervisor Natoli mentioned, none of us do this alone, and we are working on our 24th year of marriage together, and we are blessed to have each other in each other's lives. But I have to tell you, it's something that I profess to do here and do as best I can, and it would not be possible without the love and support of Roxanna. So, I want to start by thanking you, babe, and these flowers are to acknowledge all that love and support that you give me day in and day out. So, let me also reflect on some of the people, the very important people that make it possible to do what I do, what we do in county government. First, I want to extend my sincerest thanks to my beloved family, who made the trip from the Bay Area to be here today. They actually surprised me, which is a great, a great way to start the day, start the new year, our first meeting of the year. And with us today, I have my father-in-law Jorge Rosinos, I have my sister-in-law Anna Rosinos, my other sister-in-law Eda Rosinos, I have my nephew Ricky Rivera, I have Clara Rivera back there, I have Sammy, this is Ricky's dear girlfriend, and they all made the trip here to be with us today. And I also want to acknowledge those who we've recently lost in the Rosinos family. So, unfortunately, our mother-in-law, our dear mother, Bertha, could not be here today, or our brother-in-law George. So, we certainly are thinking about them today, and my great aunt as well. She left us at the grand old age of 105, just about a year, year and a half ago. So, in any event, I want to start certainly with them. They are extremely dear to me and extend that love and support that give me what I need to do this job. I want to also extend my sincerest thanks, obviously, to the voters of District 1. Without their support, obviously, none of us would be able to serve. And earning that confidence of the voters is not anything that each of the five of us takes lightly. We work hard every time we choose to run for election or reelection, even if there may not be an opponent. I know each of us does not take that for granted, one iota, and we do what we can to make sure that our constituencies understand the work that we do, the task of resource management, the task of public policymaking, and so I want to make sure that I extend my thanks to them as well. I have with us here some extremely dear friends. I want to start with my closest friend Tina Thomas, who actually swore me in in 2010 when I was first elected. Tina's a very well-respected secret attorney here in Sacramento and across the state of California. She also is a very dear friend of my late father, Joe Serna, and she's served as my treasurer, but she's kind of the oracle that I go to on a number of issues, and I'm very fortunate to have her in my life, as well as her husband Bill, who happens to be a bandmate of mine. But Tina serves to really give me really sound guidance and advice very frequently, and so for that, I'm eternally grateful. I also have some other of my bandmates here. I have my dear friend Nick Avdis and Mark Gilbert, each with two different bands, and speaking of bands, I should make mention of the fact that I think it's very healthy for all of us to have other outlets besides local governance and politics, and so music is the chosen way that I use to kind of let my hair down, so to speak, and it's actually turned into something very special. We've since turned our band experience into a fairly successful nonprofit in recent years, raising probably in excess of about $400,000 over the last four or five years for a number of good causes, including our annual scholarship program that benefits college-bound students from around the county, and this is the scholarship program that really has been the beneficiary of all the hard work of our public servants in our health and human services and human assistance arenas here in Sacramento County. I also have my dear friend Panarea Avdis. She served as my very first Chief of Staff and was recently appointed the Chief of Staff to our brand-new Lieutenant Governor Lenny Cunalakis. So, thank you, Panarea, for being here. Nick's got his two children here. Can you guys wave? All right. And Nikki, his wife's here as well. So, I'm really blessed to be surrounded by some terrific people in my life. I also want to extend my thanks to the team that really makes what I do possible every day on a very practical level, and that's my District 1 staff. Glenda Pacino, who unfortunately cannot be here, she serves as kind of the gatekeeper to the office. She's feeling a bit under the weather today. But I also have my Chief of Staff Lisa Nava here. I have Kiriya Yellow, she's my Director of Constituent Affairs, and Erin Chong, my Special Assistant. All three of, all four of you really make it possible for me to do what I feel I need to do for my constituents. As Supervisor Natoli rightfully noted, we arrive to work every day very humbled by the 12,500 or so folks in this organization, Sacramento County, that have made careers in public service. And whether you're a probation officer, or whether you're a social worker, whether you're a parks person, it really is county government that, I will argue all day long, is the most intimate level of governance, even more so than municipal government. And why is that? That's because, especially in a county like this, an urban county, we do it all. We do everything, from fixing your potholes to making sure that folks receive child support the way they're supposed to. And we're in charge of public health, we're in charge of making sure communicable disease stays in check. So, these are all the things that attracted me to this position, this post, in the first place, and I really want to say thank you to our staff, our personnel, everyone from our CEO's office down. It really is an honor to walk through these doors every day, come to work, and work alongside you. And it's not certainly as fleeting a position to make a career out of public service here, and we are, just to remind everyone, very temporary occupants of these offices that we hold. We're very fortunate to hold them, but we're temporary. So, I have a lot of respect for those that have made this a career. I want to thank my colleagues, the other four members of the Board of Supervisors. In some respects, it's only the five of us in this organization of nearly 13,000 that really understand what it takes to do the job and the sacrifices that come with that, and there are a great many of those. I won't regale with you with all of them, but certainly, time is probably the most important one to note. It takes an immense amount of time, and it's not just a nine-to-five slot that we work. Literally, you are working every waking hour of the day. Your responsibilities to your constituents really have no time slot, no time card associated with it. And so, my hat's off to each of the four people behind me who have also taken this oath and who continue to serve in their respective capacities representing their districts. Finally, I want to say a few words about my late parents. Unfortunately, I lost my parents at a fairly young age. I was 31, and at that time, I had lost, by that time, I had lost my father, my mother, and my stepmother, all to cancer. And as many know, my father was a local elected figure in his own right here. He served on the Sacramento City Council for a number of years, and was our late mayor. And it was really from a very young age, young place in life, where I began to groom a respect for public service in an elected capacity. To tell you the truth, I never had designs on being here. I didn't go to school to be an elected person. I didn't study government, per se, as a chosen major in college. It came to me in a somewhat circuitous way, but I will tell you that having had that opportunity to watch my father govern and the way he did it, I continue to take playbook, plays out of his playbook as frequently as I can, because I think he did a masterful job at the job he did representing us here in the city of Sacramento. So, I just want to reflect upon his legacy and his contribution to my ability to serve you now for the beginning of a third term. And certainly, my stepmother, who was also very dear to me, and my mother, they contributed in different ways. My mother was an artist, and again, I mentioned the music, that has certainly influenced me in terms of my passion for music and the visual arts. And my stepmother, she was someone close to me in terms of her ability to really counsel me on faith, and so I really do want to acknowledge all of their contributions. So, with that, again, I want to thank everyone for being here. This is a very special moment for us. We have, I think, done some extraordinary work here at the county, some very difficult work. Everything from enhancing American River Parkway to making sure that our homeless services are intact and doing what we expect them to do, to making sure that our mental health services are likewise maximized to serve those in need. And again, I'm very, very proud of not just the work that I may have been directly involved with, but again, as others have said, we don't do it alone. We work as a team up here, and yes, our politics are very different at times, our positions are very different at times, our styles are very different at times, but ultimately, we get the job done, and we do it with a lot of forethought, a lot of love for our community, and certainly with the benefit of the contributions that come from the broader community. So, with that, again, thank you, and I look forward to the next four years.
Okay. That accomplished, we will now elect a Chair and Vice Chair for this year of 2019.
Well, Madam Chair, I would move that we approve, make the motion that we install Patrick Kennedy as Chairperson and Vice, for Vice Chair Supervisor Serna for the upcoming year.
I second the motion. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Good luck.
I can see you smiling the biggest around here, as Peters is giving it away.
It's sad to turn it over, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm out of here. Apologize to the public. I'm actually going to turn around and directly address the Chair.
Another long speech?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mine is good luck.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to thank Supervisor Peters, Chair Peters, for a year of, I mean, we had some significant challenges this year, there's no question, that took tremendous amount of patience, and something that isn't necessarily characteristic of Supervisor Peters, but you showed a tremendous amount of patience through some very, very... But you showed a tremendous amount of patience through some very, very difficult testimony, very, very difficult hearings.
I didn't know it showed.
There were times, there's no question about it, if sitting in your seat, I would have continued to the next month when you just took it on. And I thank you for that and all that you did. We customarily give the outgoing Chair a gift, of course, characteristic of Supervisor Peters. She did not want a gift. Instead, she wanted us to make a contribution on her behalf for, to help the fire victims in the campfire. And that, I think, says a lot about the character of who Supervisor Peters is. So we have a rather, you know, modest amount. We, we are county employees, but we, but a very large check, so. So thank you Supervisor Peters. And if we could get everybody to come down to get a photo, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay, all right. Well, we are going to recess for fifteen minutes for refreshments in the lobby and then they'll switch all the names around and all that good stuff. So we'll be back at ten-twenty.